We're going to call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. So I'd like to note that for today's meeting, video conferencing may be used by one board member of, one board of education member. And that board member may properly conduct business in the vote of what matters. Can I have a motion for approval of the set agenda? Questions on today's agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Ready to move into public comment? This is the first two public comment periods. And this one is dedicated for members, CCS, the stakeholders to comment on issues pertaining to today's agenda. There will be a second public comment that is open for any, any comments. This comment period is for today's agenda items only. If a member of the public would like to speak, give them two minutes. They can either come to the podium and speak, or they have members of the public online, they can raise their digital hand using the buttons at the bottom of the screen.
Four online participants.
Okay, so I'll just hold for a moment in case we have a digital hand. Digital hand interest.
Done.
Okay, we're going to move on into board comment. And if Fred is online, okay. So, we're well into school year now. Do you have any board member comment on today's agenda?
Enjoy Jimmy Cass's speech. It was very invigorating. Better, let roll, load his excitement. And I, and I've talked to the teachers who felt that it continued throughout the day that way.
I spoke to many of the teachers as well, and they came up to me and they all appreciated that. They, they felt that it was a very positive experience. I thoroughly enjoyed it. It's great. Great. Looks like we've got some change culture rolling here, so. Anyone else want to comment? First off is student representative report.
Alright, so as the speakers stated, but we now have, it's kind of like a first full week. So we started last week, midweek. Student government was announced they are taking applications now for all of their officer positions. Applications may be due Monday, the 19th. So when student government is up and rolling, we should be able to report them. Really start getting the student body involved. Student involvement is something that we're really pushing for this year. Obviously, this is the first year that we're trying to get full swing. So clubs are being promoted. There's something being planned to go over what clubs we have, but go over, you know, what clubs we kind of are looking for, does any student interest in starting new clubs? Sports seasons have begun and we're trying to really promote getting turnout games, come support your classmates, come support your teammates. And I have heard a lot of discussions about school spirit and kind of making sure all of us are forming a community and supporting each other because wellness are really excited to be back in full swing. Especially like this is the first graduating class that has had their first kind of full year back in a while. And so I think people from what I have heard are very excited to be back to be involved again.
Thanks, Gracie. I want to talk about school spirit. I remember years ago, driving down here when the kids were still at the Lake Spirit School, they'd have to come down. And we'd see all these banners all over the place with Panther Spirit, Panther Pride. As you're driving down the driveway, I would love to see break out some of those and just get them throughout the area that it really does make a difference. Have a visual to remember, hey, there's a game this weekend or whatever. I just remember being pretty excited because I knew the boys were going to be headed to chat eventually. And I just, I missed them to get them.
That is one thing. And I know there have been a couple of classes that, like Ms. Fisher is, she on her board has what games are happening that week. And so all around the school, not just students, but teachers, and it's been promoted a lot that we're going to be involved again. And I know a lot of sports teams, like for volleyball, they are working on getting signs made, getting, like making sure that that is being promoted because I think all of us will be for that. But I'll write that one down and bring that up the next week. Okay, thank you.
It's also worth noting, Mary Ann, that we, I know this isn't exactly the same thing, but we have quoted out variable message board signs. Don't know if we have timeline on that in terms of which year, but it's, it's happening.
It's the hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project for this year. We have some samples. We've gone to some site visits and facilities committee is going to be talking a little bit more about it at their next meeting. And hopefully by winter time, if they, if they install in the winter, certainly by spring, we should have one at the end of this world.
And the nice thing about that, of course, is it's really easy for someone to request a message on the sign because no one has to run up the hill and swap letters. It's all cellular now. So.
Fifteen, yes. I just want to mention to Gracie that one of our strands associated with our district goals this year is student voice. So we want you to hold us accountable to make sure that we're soliciting student voice and, and, you know, and other principals are meeting with you, but the district leadership team would love to do that as well and really kind of walk our path this year. So, thank you. And I know in advance, we're going to excuse Gracie because she's going to go to the volleyball game. So.
Tonight, the girls volleyball team is playing against Maple Hill. So we have a pretty strong volleyball team, but Maple Hill also has a very strong volleyball team. So this is going to be one of our more tough games. And so it was requested that we have a lot of students support tonight.
Great. Well, leave as soon as you want or as, stay as long as you want. And maybe if, is this in the gym here?
No, this is at Maple Hill.
Oh, she's got to travel a little bit. So we're gonna.
This is not on our trip.
Yeah, yeah.
As soon as your questions have been addressed, we're gonna, we're gonna scooter out here.
I don't know that I have any questions. I sort of, you know, I get itchy about like, like understanding student morale. But I think this early in the school year, everyone's usually pretty excited. So if you don't, if you think that that's, that's true.
Yeah, this is something that is kind of a continuation of last year. I remember there was a lot of during student government meetings, there was a lot of talk about, okay, we want to get this done, but there are regulations in place. We are working with COVID protocols. So while we wanted to have more assemblies and more like community based things that we were still working with protocols. So this is something that even last year, when I was involved with student government as secretary, I was still hearing this thing. And that was something that was still in the suggestion box that we had was that this was wanted. We just couldn't do it because of COVID protocols at this point last year. So I do think that this is something the student body is very passionate about because it's a continuation of what they were saying last year as well.
Do you, do you think the student body understands that we're under no very minimal obligations at this point?
Yeah, I'm saying that at this point last year,
Yeah.
we were. And so this year, I think that they are very serious about actually being involved and wanting that morale because it's a continuation of what they were saying last year. These are conversations that I heard during the school year of last year. And obviously we did ramp up the morale a little bit at the end during the spring sports seasons.
What I, so I'm hoping everyone has the ex, the general expectation that we're going to be as business as usual as possible.
Yeah.
We're back to.
Yeah. And I think that's why students are pushing so much more to kind of bring back school spirit.
Great. Well, maybe we'll get some extra energy this year then.
Hopefully.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, we're going to move on into the update on the openings of school with Dr. D'Angelo.
Thank you. To go along with the previous comments, our opening day keynote was a, was a phenomenal success. A shout out to Dr. Root and Kate Gerard, who worked to bring him here from a scheduling and funding perspective. And we'll be following up. He is going to be, one of his books, Culturize, will be one of the books that we're going to offer as a, during a voluntary book study during our professional development activities this school year. So we're excited about that. And he does have a new book out, Recalibrate. We've also ordered a few copies of that to check that out. What's interesting to me, Beth, was not just that day, but I'm continuing into this week of hearing follow through and reflection on some of the things that he said just today. An administrator emailed me and said, one of their teachers was talking about identifying the student in their class. And so I mean, for those people that were there as their little drummer. And often throughout the last week or so, people were saying, hey, you know what? That's not a ten, that's a two. So some of the strategies and things he talked about have resonated to a greater extent than I could have expected. So I'm really pleased with that. And it was a real boost to having us feel like we could reboot our culture and get back to some of the things that we know to be chat strength. So I'm very appreciative for that and our, you know, all of our staff across the board from, from our non-instructional to instructional staff. So thank you. Just in terms of an update, we, as you know, Mr. Fortran took over as principal of the middle school, which left us a vacancy at MED for an assistant principal. That assistant principal position was posted and that posting closes on the sixteenth. And so shortly thereafter, we will review those applications and resumes and get started in terms of interviewing and selecting a successor to Mr. Fortran here at MED. In the interim, which you're going to see on the agenda tonight, worked with Ms. Reno and others in terms of what could we do in the interim. And you're going to see a resolution that asks the board to approve for a temporary position. We've worked closely with the CCS TA in establishing what's called the TOSA, Teacher on Special Assignment, a dean of students at MED for the period of time of the first trimester here at MED. We think that will be a great interim solution while we select the next assistant principal, knowing that even once we select someone, they will likely have to give about a 30 day notice to their current employer. So in all likelihood, we won't have anybody here until November. And there'll be some time, a bit of overlap where the individual can have time to accumulate themselves to the district, orientate themselves to the district. So we're very excited about that plan. The data. So the first trimester, the first trimester at MED started at the beginning of school year and goes to December 8th. So that's why we made it to be coincident with that. The first trimester at the elementary school. Yep. And so our hope is to have an AP in place so that the person on special assignment can go back to their own classroom for the beginning of the second trimester. Gracie mentioned student assemblies, one of the things, if you remember from last year, that we heard in the student survey, one assembly in particular was on student safety. We are working, we are having a district wide faculty meeting tomorrow afternoon where we have need of associates coming in to do our first in-person school safety training that we've had in several years from the pandemic. So we're really excited about that. There's actually a requirement that that be completed by September 15th. Traditionally, we would have had that during the opening day or two of school, but because we wanted to focus instruction and culture and students, we put the required trainings off just a little bit. So we're doing it during the first district wide faculty meeting tomorrow afternoon. But shortly thereafter, John and the other, Brett and Kristen are working with our safety consultants to bring those same types of assemblies into the schools for students. And we're doing that in various ways at different levels. The conversation that we have with a third or fourth grader is much different than what we have at the high school. So they're doing that in a much age appropriate manner. At the MED, the person will be going into individual classrooms and having more of a conversation about safety. And at the high school, we'll be here to, you know, a more mature audience. So we'll be doing that in the coming weeks and months. I had said this before, in addition to taking rebooting and refocusing on our academic programs, we have an eye towards school safety for this year. And we're going to have many different activities directed towards refreshing everybody's memory on what we should be doing in case there's, there's, there's some issues. Pause for just a second. That's really what I have for, for now. Questions?
Thank you. Good luck with your process here. We are into board committee reports and tonight we have C-Plaque on the calendar. I understand they met this morning. Beth, you want to report?
Alright, we met this morning and the first thing we did was establish our meeting dates for the year. And they're going to be November 1st, February 7th, April 4th, May 2nd, if necessary, and June 6th. Ended up keeping the same officers as we had last year. So with the election of officers, we just kept everything intact. One thing that came out from Jen was that all trustees on the board must now be trained starting in January of 23. So we weren't really sure if board members who are on C-Plaque need that training or if the trainings we have here are sufficient.
Offhand, I don't know the answer to that. So we will, we'll help you figure that out.
In her general report, basically, she wanted to thank the, our facilities committee for replacing the hot water heater and the HVAC up and running. And but they still need a little bit of calibration because there's a lot of humidity still being held in the building. So they have dehumidifiers that they are literally emptying a couple of times a week. So that's something that Mike's aware of. He told us. Became aware of that this morning. So they're going to be working on that. They are going to be looking for, they are looking for part-time clerk because one of the women is moving out of the area who's been with them for a while. They're also talking about hiring to the library pages that they have there. They're looking to see if they can hire some high school students to do it because it's hours and it will be a good first job. So we're looking at the possibility of getting a couple of kids who do go to the library on a regular basis if they consider taking on this. The page job is basically just putting books on the shelf that have been returned. So that would be a great first job. She went over some of the summer programs and I have to tell you, with preschool stuff, my grandson just thrived on it all summer. And he even asked last Friday, library, library, Friday, library. And I'm raising that this week. But he's pretty tuned into it now that he goes to the library on Friday mornings. But they did, they had a great summer reading program and they're looking in the fall. The fall one is nice because the dance, little dance group for the preschoolers is being moved to Mondays because they're going to have a Spanish book time. And somebody's coming in, it's going to actually be reading to kids in Spanish. And that's great for our, our community. And then the little dance group thing is being moved to Mondays, which Grayson's also very excited about because he's with me on Mondays and he wasn't on Wednesday. So we're, we're really cleaning up this, this year. So that's about the, for the kids programs, they are going to be, the friends of the library are starting to get together their programs for the year. And there's going to be one on September 24th with a panel discussion on farming in Columbia County. And I think that's the same day a bunch of the farms are going to have open houses. So it kind of ties in with everything that is going on in the community here. We did have a booth at the fair on Friday evening from 4:30 to 9:30 and they got a very good turnout of people stopping during that time. So they were hoping that they, you know, spread the word, heard about some of the programs in the community and getting more people in. I have to tell you, Jen has just done a phenomenal job. Since she's gotten here, building programs and keeping them going.
I was impressed with the day. Like, school. Just like we have to have it in the library as well as this school. Her, she can, she wants to say back. I've already read it. It's, it's have to be fine. We shall have her back if we have any problems with it. Back to her by October 12th. And then I, I think it comes to us overall, just like your. It's everything. Fire, fire, shivers, everything. It's like, like, like. Just for, just this day, a bit of letters comment.
Yeah, the, where they're located, we, you know, they can't empty anything. So they do have to take, dump them out occasionally. So I met with Jen. I'm going to meet with Andy just to see if we can do something. Basement's difficult as it would naturally be. So we're going to see what we can do to, to address that. Could be something with the air conditioning, but we're going to check.
So this was, this is a longstanding problem. It's always been a little moist there. Given it's below grade, low grade, that's the problem of a low grade space. Do the, is the air conditioner running like all year in that space? Is it only?
Well, not all year, obviously.
Yeah.
The winter it's not.
Was it running?
But we have it running. Yeah.
It was running the last two weeks.
It's working. Yeah, it's cool. It's not hot in there. They have air. So but they're just, and I got to check, you know, they have those small units that fill up. And it depends where you set the temp. Like, I got to check all that too. If I put it in my basement, a certain level, it'll run 24/7. So I got to look into that.
I'm curious if the, if the air conditioning, the way it's zoned, can you be programmed to just solve the issue from a facility perspective or the only fix there is people in buckets or a tile drain, right?
Yeah, no, I'd like to come with something better than people having that big buckets. So, but maybe we can do something with this Johnson, with the system. That's what we're going to look at first. And if not, I'd rather have something that goes into something else, you know, a drain, like you said. I want people to have to empty that every.
Yeah, I don't, there must be drains there someplace.
Every day. So yeah, we're, we, I spoke with her after the meeting. So I just made aware of it. So we'll, we'll address that. Take care of that problem.
Yeah, it's certainly not a new issue. At least, at least five or eight years it's been like that. I don't, I would presume forever. Okay, great. You know, we're. So Fred, can he hear me still? He should be able to hear me. Fred, if, I think, I'm not sure if you missed board member comment, but, but or when you dialed in, but if you have any comments you'd like to add, just general comments for the day, you can switch mics over for a moment.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm okay, Matt, but thanks for asking. I did, I've gotten time for the library report. I'm, I'm okay for now. Thanks.
Uh, well, with that, we are into consensus agenda. So R14, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda H through J as written. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments on any of today's consensus agenda items? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, we, we heard that although it wasn't on screen, but we need to switch over. Okay. I just can't see it there. Okay.
Fred, if you want something, if you want to say something, go ahead.
Sorry, no, I was just saying I, I was agreeing, consensus agenda.
One day we'll get a really good teleconferencing system in place. This is much better than before COVID. Alright. Did I do any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Consensus agenda passed. Items for future agenda. I have one item, two items actually. One is, and I'm just pulling up some notes here. I noted a couple of meetings ago that we have the NISBA conference coming up. We're getting a little closer now and it's actually possible to note our delegates. So I, I guess this is just a general appeal to the board, particularly if you haven't been to NISBA to represent us yet. Any volunteers to be our nominee? You would, you know, you'd go to the meeting and sit through a bunch of debate and essentially choose the positions that NISBA is going to lobby the state on. And that changes, really pushes state education law. So does, is anyone here?
Yeah, I don't think there's a virtual component to that this year. I could check.
Oh, it's not virtual? Right. So it's all in person, huh?
Yeah, yeah. And you have one, one member attending the conference.
Oh, so they separate, did they separate out the conference from the voting? I think that's what happened. I'm just looking for the.
They're going back to a traditional in-person model, which I believe on Saturday. Oh, I'm sorry. So they have separated.
Yeah, yeah. I think what they found was they got more participation in Western New York.
My apologies. I lost track of that.
So, but there's also the, the in-person convention, right? But this is the, it used to be one convention in Congress, right? And now it's just the, the Congress. So we, we've got, there's a deadline coming up?
Yes. So, but one of the things I did want to make mention to is that.
There's an orientation, yeah. And I, I would recommend the orientation of only to get their software training, just to test against their software. Alright, so we have a few weeks here. And we don't have to send a delegate, but it's always good. So if anyone wants to reach out to me, I will get you nominated. We'll have to formally do that for the. The second thing was we have an audit meeting, which we haven't scheduled yet next, next week. We're looking at time slots, although maybe there's some other time slots that would work. But 1:00 PM on Wednesday or Friday of next week, we need two board members. I can, I can sit in one of the seats. Chris did this last year. He may be available again. I'll try to track him down after the meeting, but. You can do the Wednesday. Anyone else interested in audit? Beth, I'll put you on the. Beth, I'll put you on the maybe lists. And you'll either be my second probably, or you'll replace me in one of these.
Is this one of those meetings where you have to have a stakeholder? Pick with, you know, other people?
Yes, and we have, we have a community member. The issue we have from the board perspective is state law says we need three people on the committee and two, I think two of them have to be board members. So it's, it's almost like a miniature participation in finance because you go over, you don't go over everything in detail the way you do in the finance committee, but you're really, you know, you're sitting down with the auditor and they're, they're bringing you on a journey through the school's finances. It's, it's a good introduction, even if it's like 90 pages of boring.
Well, I'm doing my finance training on Friday, so we'll be updated on that.
Okay.
Down that road, why?
Okay.
But I was just wondering, because we had that discussion about having other, you had to have a balance of work.
Yes.
Stakeholders as well.
So we're. We have, yeah, we have that addressed. And this is not really, you're not actually auditing. We have a designated outside auditor, but someone has to listen to the report and say, "Okay, that sounds good," or "We should do something about this." Yeah, they're ready to present, right? Yeah. So. All right. So to be, to be, and probably the Wednesday. Do you wanna just circle that? I can do it remote. If someone else can do it, then it can be. Hopefully, he can make that time. Yes. Okay, that was my two items. Does anyone else have new business? People will, we need to pass the torch to Fred.
I'm good, thank you, though.
Okay, so this is a short meeting. We, as far as I know, don't have a need for an executive. Okay, we have a second public comment. Actually, before we, before we go into future agenda, I just wanted to put this on your radar. So we had a lot of interest from the board on public safety. Of course, I'll just take this opportunity to notify everyone. It's not a board committee. The safety committee, it's superintendent's committee. We've traditionally had one, one rep there. It's been, it's been the, it's been the board president as far as, as long as I've been on the board. We're gonna continue that this year. However, I think we did a safety update in executive session of the summer at some point. Maybe it shouldn't be all the way in the summer before we do another executive update.
Well, remember, we're, our assessment should be taking place next two to four weeks.
Okay.
That my plan would be to review the results of that assessment in executive session.
Perfect.
And then a plan addressing any material weaknesses or deficiencies. And that probably will take place, I think, in December.
All right, I think that'll probably satisfy the board. I know that there was a lot of interest there when we did our committee interest survey. And with that back and a second public comment, so this, we do have hands up. We do have some hands up. So this, this is a public comment period for Chatham Central School District stakeholders to speak on any topic that affects our school community. And we'll give two minutes to, to any member who wants to speak.
So we, the first person who's indicated interested in speaking is Caitlin. I'm gonna promote you to a panelist. We ask that you identify who you are and your relationship to the school district. You can unmute your mic and, there you go.
Yeah, hi there. My name is Caitlin Murphy. I'm at 56 Kinderhook Street. I suppose I'm sort of representing the parents of the Chatham residents whose children attend the Berkshire Waldorf School and would like to bring forth the issue of non-public school bus transportation. A new family moved into the school district and planned to utilize the bus transportation as they noted via Google Maps that their residence to the school was at a distance of 15.0 miles. And upon the school board learning this, they then replied that unfortunately, they calculated it at 15.3 miles and would therefore be unable to provide this service. Of note, at this time, there are some six families, perhaps a dozen children, who would benefit from this. Also, there was another family, the Coon Cox family in Spencertown, which is 12.7 miles away, therefore very much within that 15-mile radius, and tried to reach out to the board multiple times and was told that someone would get back to them, and unfortunately, never did.
Caitlin, just hold on a second. I'm sorry, I didn't add this as a preface. It's required that we don't mention individual.
Oh, so sorry. So sorry. Okay. One of them may be in it via Zoom, but yes, okay, I'm so sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. It's just a privacy issue.
Okay.
Go ahead if you have more, I'm taking notes here.
Okay. Um, just, you know, also of important note, you know, that we had found that the statute states that distances greater than 15 miles may be provided and accommodated if the voters approve, if that is truly necessary for such a discrepancy. And that's mostly it.
Thank you, Caitlin. You know, since, since this was a, a public comment period, the board will not be responding particularly as it, as it pertains to specific individuals. However, anyone who writes a, a, a private letter to the board, to me or the other board members, we will, we will have a direct written response.
Mr. President, I just want to encourage our, our community member. I'm unaware of this situation. So I would appreciate the opportunity to escalate that through transportation to the superintendent's office so I could take a closer look at it.
Okay.
Certainly go from there.
Absolutely, this is, this is news to me as well.
Right.
Okay, that's great. Would it be possible, yes, can we find your information to, where we should send to write that private letter?
You know, on the school website, which is chathamcentralschools.com, section, it's, it's very close to where you'll find information on logging into the board meetings. And it has contact information for the board members. Also there is a contact superintendent button that is very visible. And that's the best place to start, I think.
Right at the bottom of every page says, "Ask the superintendent."
Okay, awesome, love it. I appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you, Caitlin, very much.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Have anyone else here? We do, I'm going to, Caitlin, and I'm going to promote Sandra Williams. Bear with us. Sandra, you are now promoted to a panelist. If you'd unmute your microphone, identify yourself, and you can begin speaking.
Great, I'm Sandra Williams, resident in East Chatham and have two children registered with the Chatham School District. And I just wanted to echo what Caitlin was saying and add a bit more detail to that. Firstly, that many of us, myself included, spoke with Josh, the Director of Transportation, who was nothing but responsive and kind to all of our inquiries. And as he understood it, there was a 15.0 mile maximum. My husband Chad Williams called Paul Overbaugh, the State Director of Pupil Transportation, to get some more information. And he explained that the school districts do have some discretion there with the mileage and can allow for transportation beyond that 15 miles. And he was aware of at least two districts in the state that are allowing for transportation at 16 miles, 17 miles, for example. We ourselves live 16.2 miles from Berkshire Waldorf School. So I, I just wanted to add to what Caitlin was saying, and I appreciate you considering this. And we can send private letters to you as you suggested. Thank you.
You can unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
You're on mute. All right, sounds like she's giving in, giving in.
Sometimes when you scroll to the homepage on iPhone.
Thanks for the attempt, Valian.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay. If anyone in the room would like to speak, we're still in public comment period. Or do we have any other digital hands?
That's where we go.
Okay. Well, with that, that's the end of our meeting. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Wait, wait.
Oh, great, so we have one more public comment.
Senior here at Chatham School. And I was, and I was a summer worker here. I'm sorry, I'm just nervous smelling any of that. I was just a summer worker here for, like, the custodial staff. And I just had, like, a problem with staff here in general. Like, no, I honestly didn't really. It was just, like, I guess this is, like, a problem with just professionals. Like, it's not, how to, like, say it.
Okay, Kylie, if, if you have something specific you'd like to put on record, you may do that. However, we've received your message. We will make sure that someone from the district reaches out to you. Okay? And this is very important to us. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. And yes, you got that right. And and I really appreciate you coming in today. Thank you.
There are no other hands up.
Would it, would it be timely to move into an executive session or not at the moment? No. Oh. I don't have any, I have paper. Not that I saw, so we'll reconvene. All right, with that, motion to adjourn, I think we had a Okay. All in favor? Okay, we're adjourned.